Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could I have roll call, please?
Biboel.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig. Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. I don't think there are any changes on it. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is set. Item four is consent agenda. Are there any items on there to pull off separately and discuss? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to for consideration.
I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. Sir second?
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, it's time for a public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to make comment at our meeting on an item that's not already on our agenda, now is the time. Feel free to let us know who you are and...
My name's Randy Belk. I live on 2547 North Liberty Road. That's just an address. If you've driven on North Liberty Road, there's a log house with a pond right beside it. We've lived there thirty-five, thirty-six years. What in, not this next meeting, but the one following it, on your agenda, you have something that's going to be voted on of eminent domain on that property. What I'm asking for right now is inviting the city council to actually come out and walk that property. It's only 600 feet. See what could, what not could be, but will be destroyed in that eminent domain area. There are things that couldn't even begin to be replaced. So I'm just asking. I can be available anytime. Also, we can take a look at alternatives. And you can actually visualize them. But I think there's a lot of, what looks on paper isn't quite reality. And I'm inviting you out to see it. See what you think of it. Anybody want to come visit us?
Our council can't make comments, Randy, but I'm certain that there will be some interest in there. Will you be sure to let staff know how to reach you? Phone number for you?
I...
Mayor, I have the contact information. I'm happy to provide that and get you in touch with them.
That sounds great. Thank you, Grant.
All righty.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to make comment tonight? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing time. Item six is our engineering report. Josiah.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick hit, I'll hit all the projects. Any new information that's come up? Centennial Park Event Complex obviously was awarded. That's moving along fine. The pre-construction meeting was held last week, which was a great meeting. And as hoped, they're going to start right after Blues and Barbecue. So on track there. Streets and Maintenance Facility, the interior models coming along. The new front window entries are installed and the new door and the vestibule. The drywall is about 90% complete. Right now, they're doing a lot of mechanical duct work on the inside space. The Streets Department sign equipment is going to be moved into their new upper level space, which would be nice. That's their new space where Dan Lang and Michael will do all their sign work. That'll be moved up there this week. And the HVAC units have been installed as well. So all that to say, they're still on track and on schedule. City Hall, couple of quick things. We know we're in here, obviously. There's some punch lists inside and outside. Almost all those things are complete. There's still a few interior things, and they're still obviously working outside a bit. You know that the decorative metal paneling is going up around the building. That's nearing completion. The last piece of that is to install the North Liberty lettering signage on the outside of the building and some of the electrical that goes with that. We've got the Penn Street improvements at the railroad crossing that did close on Monday as planned. The contractor began working right away, taking pavement out and working on storm sewer. As a reminder, they have 15 working days to get that road back open. So off to a good start. We've got the Freverine Road Signalization Project to add permanent signals at Jones in Kansas. That's been hanging out there. The pre-construction meeting is scheduled for next Monday. So schedule details to follow on when that's going to get started. Last but not least, the West Penn Street work. The intersection is still closed, but they do have a lot of the paving down that intersection. All the, all the storm sewer, everything underground is ready. So upcoming will be the paving of the actual West Penn Street Road from the intersection back. So also, also that project is still on track to be done in time, so.
Can you remind us on that completion date? Maybe percentage along, percentage of schedule, such, something like that?
Yeah. So the entire project has 75 working days, not calendar days. They've used 26. Obviously, there was a lot of rain in May, but like I said, they're getting ready to pave the road, so we feel like they're, they're going to be ahead. And the intersection itself had a separate schedule. They had 40 calendar days to get that back open to traffic. They've used 24 at the end of last week, so. 50% perhaps on that one?
Thank you. Any other questions for Josiah? Thank you. Ryan, city administrator report.
Thank you. Just a couple of things for me this evening. First, we have sent the social service applications out to previous applicants, and we should see those come in by the end of the month. We will then get those applications to you for review. There's some fairly significant homework. As you may remember from previous years, we anticipate anywhere from 25 to 30 applications that you'll be reviewing and then ultimately making a decision on either in July, late July or early August. I would note regarding social services, Tracy and I met with a group, including the United Way and other funders throughout the county just this week to talk about combining that process with, with a larger group, still allowing each, each group to have, each city or municipality to have their own decision-making process, but combining the application process to make it a little bit more efficient for really the, the social service groups. More to come on that, but we're starting to investigate that a little bit. Again, just to, really an efficiency matter for those groups. And then lastly, Greater IC, representatives from Greater IC will be at our next meeting, June 25th, to present an update on some of the activities they've been working on since, since their, since the development of the, of the new group. Nancy Byrd and her team will be here for that. And that's what I have this evening, Mayor, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Ryan?
Just a couple of things for me. Fortunate enough to be able to be out at the Let Love Fly event over the weekend. I think it was the biggest audience that we've had out there, biggest group. So that was a really great community event. Ryan and I are going to be in Washington DC tomorrow and Thursday with probably a 30 or so others in the corridor, meeting with our legislators as well out there. So glad to have them as an audience. And finally, I'll have a proclamation here for Juneteenth National Freedom Day. And whereas Juneteenth National Freedom Day is a day of profound significance in American history, marking the end of slavery in the United States and commemorating the emancipation of enslaved African Americans, it celebrates the day of June 19th, 1865, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation, when Major General Gordon Granger led Union Soldiers into Galveston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and reading the order that declared the remaining quarter of a million enslaved people, mostly of African descent, to be legally free from their tax and masters. And whereas Juneteenth serves as a reminder of the long and arduous journey toward freedom and equality for all Americans and underscores the resilience, strength, and perseverance of the African-American community. And whereas in Texas and throughout the South, Juneteenth celebrations began to be held each year on June 19th, consisting of prayer services, inspirational speeches, readings of the Emancipation Proclamation, food, games, and dances. And whereas in 1997, during the 105th U.S. Congress, House Joint Resolution 56 and Senate Joint Resolution 11 were passed, officially recognizing the true anniversary of the emancipation of enslaved African Americans as Juneteenth Independence Day, an important part of our country's history and heritage. And whereas Juneteenth reflects our community's deep belief in liberty and equality for all individuals, as all benefit from a greater understanding and appreciation of the experiences of others. And whereas the observance of Juneteenth encourages dialogue, education, and understanding of our nation's complex history and the enduring legacy of slavery, and inspires efforts to promote diversity, inclusion, and unity in our communities. And whereas Juneteenth provides an opportunity for all Americans to honor the contributions and achievements of African Americans throughout history, celebrate African-American culture and art, and to recognize the ongoing struggle for racial justice and equality in our society. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the City of North Liberty, do hereby recognize Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in the City of North Liberty, and would encourage community members to search for events in the area and learn how to participate in this year's Juneteenth celebration activities.
I'll move on to item nine, council reports. This is an opportunity for our council members to let the public know what they've been doing on behalf of the city. No particular order. Go right ahead.
So after the last meeting, we had NPO meeting, and there was some interest in rapid train transit again. There was a company that was offering to bring that and just trialing it out for us if you paid them to do that. Still, the bus study is underway, and hopefully that will be back by September. And the other thing that we did was we adjusted the funding for the 380 interchange project so that we could add a better sign to tell you when you're going south on 380, when you're going to get onto Interstate 80 East or West. So that will be, they'll be working on that, so.
Thank you.
Brian, was there conversation or was there representation at the NPO from the University of Iowa talking about the train or no?
I don't remember if there was a university person there.
No, this is an initiative that the, that, well, Katie Gerlach with Better Together has been working on. So they didn't have anyone, there was a rep from the university there, but not talking about this particular project.
Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, I did some volunteering at the Fight with Flash event in Solon. It was all over Channel 9 that evening on their event and what that was about. So certainly appreciate a lot of North Libertarians, baseball teams participating in that and helping support a local foundation. And then I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Casper and his construction technology class for building our shed out at the community gardens. Looks good, and what a great, great opportunity for kids to learn the construction trade and partner with the city. So we're appreciative. Thank you.
Can you remind us what you'll be doing tomorrow for us over the lunch hour? I think you're on the agenda. Is that correct?
Tomorrow is not me. Last month was me.
Last month was you.
Yes.
Never mind. I'll take you off the hook then.
Sorry.
I'm not sure who's presenting.
I can go. I have planned to attend, so if you need somebody to...
There may not be a, there may not be a prepared presentation yet.
It may be Nick. It may be, maybe Nick and Jillian. I'll ask. I'll find out.
Nick had the schedule. And if, if I messed up, tell Nick to contact me.
No, you're right. You did do that last one.
No, you did.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
No, not at all.
Thank you.
We appreciate the lunches, and they're, they're going well, and it's nice to have representations.
True.
I guess I'd just take my opportunity to give a shout out to all the landscaping around the city. As you drive around and flowers and the purple flowers are just, they all look very nice, and I'm appreciative of that. And then also, for our citizens, exercise some caution driving around this weekend. There'll be a lot of garage sales happening this weekend. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for me, I too attended the Let Love Fly event and thought the attendance was tremendous. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the organizers, the sponsors, and in particular, those that attended. I got there at the tail end of the day and learned that it was probably the most that it's ever been attended, so. Congratulations again to those organizers, and thank you to the sponsors. And then just briefly, I just wanted to say, Mr. and Mrs. Belk, thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for the invitation. Really appreciate when we do hear from the public and their, their opinion on matters that are, that are before the council. You know, just your dedication and your commitment of time to this illustrates that, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. All right. Item 10 is our 2024 A bond sale, and item A is public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation urban renewal loan agreement. Now, is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on this general obligation urban renewal loan agreement? I guess my computer is. I'll close the public hearing. Item B is resolution number 2024-62, and this is a resolution setting a date for public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation urban renewal loan agreement. Have a motion for consideration, please.
I'll move that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Either anyone want to offer up any comments on this? This is...
I would just note that we still do not have a bond sale date scheduled. We're working on that with our legal team, our bond counsel and financial advisor. Should be coming to you shortly, though.
Thank you. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Biboel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11 is janitorial contract, and item A, resolution number 2024-63, is a resolution approving the janitorial services contract, City Hall and Library, between the City of North Liberty and Regengood LLC. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Biboel.
Aye.
Wason.
Motion carries. Item 12 is Solomon's Entertainment District Part II, and item A is Staff and Planning Commission Recommendations, Russ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a 5,046 square foot CORDA credit union. This is the first credit union for them outside of Lynn County and the first in Johnson County, so that's pretty exciting for us. We're excited to have them. This will be the last piece of the puzzle in the commercial frontage there at Solomon's Entertainment District. And boy, this came in really solid. Appreciate Kelly Beckler with MMS is here, and I talked, had an opportunity to chat with Paula Arer, the president and CEO of CORDA Credit Union. But, you know, they were sensitive to some of the things we looked at, the Penn frontage, making sure they had a good presence there. And so the application came in really strong. Usually, we have a fair amount of comments for these things, but really minor comments. And, you know, from a youth standpoint, having a financial institution enabled to share parking with businesses that will be open on weekends at nights really is a great fit for that property because they can just share that parking. So solid application, solid all the way around, so we're appreciative of that. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request and recommends that you approve it as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Russ?
Mayor, I'd just say I was appreciative of the uniqueness of the building. It's something different and new, not, not just from elevation, but colors and, and the dimensional aspect of the building, so I appreciate that.
Russ, I may have missed this, and I probably did. Could you comment on the, the drive up is not necessarily in their lot, but how it will be shared and maintained? It starts on the lot to the west.
Yeah, great question. We specifically wanted to limit the amount of access points that the overall development had. And so this property, it was pretty small. It didn't have any direct access to Hays or Penn or anything like that, so they'll actually cross-share with the accesses of the adjacent development. So they'll actually come in off Hays from the other, but we have cross-access agreements with all those, all those lots.
Okay.
But great question.
Awesome. Thank you. Every once in a while, I can throw out a good one. Is there an applicant presentation?
Hi, I'm Kelly Beckler with MMS Consultants, the site civil on the, on the project. Just here to say thanks to staff and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight in front of council. Representatives of CORDA were not able to be here tonight. They had a previous engagement somewhere on East Coast. I don't know where, but I know they're excited about being here and just want to say I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, so.
Fire away if you guys do.
Looked pretty cool.
Yeah. I'll echo what Counselor Smith said about the, how it looks. It's a unique building out there. It's going to look great.
Yeah, I met with a representative from CORDA a couple of weeks ago and very excited, and so we're, you know, reciprocate that enthusiasm, move forward to this.
Yeah. We're excited, too. It's going to be a nice project. Thank you.
Thanks for coming on, Kelly.
Yep.
Item C then is resolution number 2024-64, and this is a resolution approving the preliminary site plan for Solomon's Entertainment District Part II, Lot 1, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Biboel.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13 is 350 West Penn Street, and item A is Staff and Planning Commission Recommendations, Russ.
Okay, another, another great request. You know, this one was interesting. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of community support for the North Liberty Community Pantry. I know one concern that, that I've expressed to them throughout, since I've been here is, you know, where their current location is, they're accessory to a church. And the concern I had with them or just the discussion was, at what point do you grow so big that it gets out of scale with being, you know, an accessory use? Certainly, the size as proposed here, 10,500 square feet, you know, is, is, they're meeting their size needs, and, and the, the need is tremendous in the community, but that certainly is the size of, of some of the retail multi-tenant businesses we see. So I was excited to see it moved to a commercial location. And we did some reorganizations and updating of the zoning code a couple of years ago, and was able to list community pantries without any of the conditions that, it was, it was always listed as a, in a conditional use. And then we kind of bifurcated that and said, well, it'll still be a conditional use in, in the residential settings with some scale considerations, but if you go to commercial, you no longer have those requirements, so they can get as big as they need to. And that makes sense more in a commercial zoning. Another thing to point out is the property is Zone C1B, which is limiting from a commercial standpoint. Obviously allows community pantries, but been here a little over four years, and I feel that a lot of interesting requests that I would, I would say for this property about uses. And in this case, zoning works. You know, want to do self-storage facilities or contractor storage base, things that probably aesthetically wouldn't be a great fit for that piece of property. We think couldn't be more excited for the North Liberty Community Pantry to be here. It's centrally located in the city, so it's a great spot. It's got great access to trail networks and things like that, so we couldn't be more excited to see this here. Brian Belk's here with Acxiom Consultants, and this is another one that, that just progressed through the process in an ideal way. They submitted a concept plan. We gave them feedback, submitted their preliminary site plan, and now we're, we're almost to the end of, of construction site plan, which means they'll be under construction here shortly. So from a process standpoint, it was ideal, and we appreciate that effort. So again, this was Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its June meeting and recommends the council approve it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Are there any questions for us before we move on?
No, just the, the garden piece of it. You know, I noticed there's some, some trees back there, and I love the idea of that garden and just, you know, the potential of it maybe expanding, you know, at some point, but it looked like it could go, you know, to the east a little bit if they ever wanted to expand it. That was my only, excited about that building.
So Russ, I had the question about the floodplain. Just more so understanding, when you look at that piece of, of property in the green that slated what, P? He asked, what, what? Explain what that is and what is that piece, and how is that split out?
Yeah, so the, the 100-year flood is a 1% annual chance of, that a property would have for flooding. And when we looked at the FEMA maps, really the, there's a small portion, it's really the southern, southern portion of it, right next to the, where it flows under West Penn Street, was, was in the, what we call the 100-year flood. So we suspect it's like that because this is pretty close to the headwaters of the Muddy Creek, and so if you do get a big storm event, all of that water flows through there and makes its way down south, and then, and then the, the properties that are downstream from it actually flood. Now that there are portions of the prop, not maybe, there's some of this property, but obviously the adjacent property that are wetlands. But from the city standpoint, we don't have any extra regulatory requirements because all their development is actually outside of the floodplain. You know, I don't know how insurance companies do it. They may require, you know, flood insurance, but from our standpoint, nothing additional regulatory.
Does that help, Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? I'll just take a moment to acknowledge something that Russ said in his comments here. Things that he does behind the scenes that we all don't really get a front seat to very often is that he's fielding requests from various businesses that, that want to locate to parts of the city, and this area of, of the city has kind of been under scrutiny for 10-plus years. So what we have there and what's being proposed there, I don't think could be a, a better fit, so thanks for, for knocking back those proposals that you could, and for the patience on this one. I think it's going to be a terrific outcome over there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Brian, do you have anything to add to this?
Good evening, everybody. Brian Belk, Acxiom Consultants, engineer on this project. No, I just want to, again, thank staff and agreed, Russ, Josiah, the whole group has been great with working through us, with us on this. The pantry is just super excited about this location, as mentioned, just accessibility-wise and to the trail and to all the room to expand gardens and everything else that they really want to do and incorporate into their facility. So no, certainly happy to answer any other questions, but they're really excited to get going, have a general contractor already on board, so we're just getting through the final details on design, and then we'll start seeing some, some work going on out there.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Any questions for Brian while he's here? Thank you for making your way up.
Thanks, Brian.
Item C is resolution number 2024-65, and this is a resolution approving the preliminary site plan for 350 West Penn Street, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Been moved, and we'll give you a second. Got that okay, Tracy?
Sure.
I don't even ask. I just don't even know I did then. Any other questions, you guys? Do we have a roll call, please, Tracy?
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Biboel.
Motion carries. Item 14 is TLNL and UIHC easement agreement. Item A is resolution number 2024-66, and this is a resolution approving the public easement agreement between TLNL, the City of North Liberty, and the State Board of Regents. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Biboel.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 is Green Belt, Green Belt Trail. Item A is resolution number 2024-67, SMF, a resolution approving the stormwater management facilities maintenance agreement and easements between the City of North Liberty and Green Belt, Green Belt Trail, gosh, I can't say that, LLC. Belt, Green Belt Trail, gosh, I can't say that, LLC, that establishes the terms and conditions under which stormwater management facilities will be maintained for Green Belt Trails Part III and IV in the City of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Be lucky I didn't ask you to read that entire resolution. Any questions? All right, Tracy, roll call, please.
Leibold?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 16 is Buck Moon Villas LLC, and Item A is Resolution Number 2024-68, a resolution approving the Stormwater Management Maintenance Facilities Maintenance Agreement and Easements between the City of North Liberty and Buck Moon Villas LLC that establishes the terms and conditions under which stormwater management facilities will be maintained for Buck Moon Villas subdivision in the City of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Are there any questions?
I guess just one question with, there's been a lot of dirt move, and there's been a lot of pump running. Is that because there's not adequate drainage for that to flow yet? Like, what's the purpose behind the tentative, I hope it's tentative, pump usage?
Yes, against the urging of staff, they wanted to do some at-risk grading and mistimed the approval process. This is something we urge people to use this tool very cautiously, and we recommended that they didn't do it, but they wanted to do some at-risk grading in the anticipation that they would get construction, you time it out, you look really good, they just weren't close, as close as they thought they were. We're very close now. In fact, we received what we think is the final plans yesterday, so we think we're at the point of issuing final approval. The need for the pumps was because we can do at-risk grading, you can't because we don't have construction plan approval install any of the drainage pipes, so they dug the ponds without any outlet for it, and so the pond filled up because we had so much rain, and they had to pump it to the ditch to relieve it, so we expect here shortly that you're really going to see some, some construction going on here.
Thank you.
That's a great question, any others? Tracy, roll call, please.
Park?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 2024-69, a resolution approving the developers' agreement for Buck Moon Villas subdivision, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
There was a second in there at the same time, I think.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
These are testing me tonight. Leibold?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Item C then is Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2024-04, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RS6 Single Unit Residential District to RM12 Multi-Unit Residence District. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about the second consideration? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, Item 17 is Primestone Residential Zoning. Item A is Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2024-05, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from ID Interim Development District to C2 Highway Commercial District on approximately 7.65 acres, to RM12 Multi-Unit Residence District on 17.01 acres, to RM8 Multi-Unit Residence District on approximately 9.18 acres, and to RS6 Single Unit Residence District on approximately 9.9 acres. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, any comments? Anymore? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
No.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18 is Old Business.
Mayor, could I just chime in here, I did hear back from Nick, and he is speaking tomorrow at the launch, he's planning to talk a little bit about the Blues and Barbie, upcoming Blues and Barbie Festival.
And I overlooked, thank you to Brian for running last meeting, so that could be with my family for that as well, I always appreciate that. Item 19 is New Business. Seeing none, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.